So we're going to begin the Planning Commission meeting for February 2014. Tonight, we're going to start with a discussion of the potential creation of a sewer district for the village center of Southampton. And I wanted to set some general context for that. We started several years ago, I think about five years ago now. We started talking about what it would mean to have sewers in the village center. And we've known for a long time that we have an environmental issue in the village of storm water going into Lake Agwam and other freshwater resources because of the drainage that goes north to south in the entire East End, but particularly here. And the Suffolk County Board of Health has stopped any new restaurants, any new residential sites in the village, in the village center, any new permits until the storm water and sewer issues are addressed. I think we all agreed that before we did that, we wanted to set constraints on what the eventual development of the village center would be. And last year, the trustees approved the new zoning for the village business district. So that's now in place. It was very carefully done over a long period of time. And I think it places many constraints on what can be done in the village. But was done with an eye to the idea that someday, that there would be a sewer district that would allow housing in the village center, which we think is very important, would allow additional restaurants and other activities in the village center. And more recently, the Planning Commission has talked about the need for additional hotel rooms in the village center. All of these are activities which sewers are critical to. So we wanted to talk out tonight, first of all, what's been done to date, the work that's been done to date, and then talk about what some potential next steps are. So Mark, do you want to start talking about what we've done so far?
All right.
And then maybe we can get into the issues and what we want to proceed.
All right. So in the last year, we've worked closely with the Suffolk County Department of Health and Department of Public Works, thanks to a grant that was arranged with Mayor Epley and Jay Schneiderman. And they retained the firm of CH2H to study the requirements and the needs for this sewer district, for the village business district. So we did consider various sites for a possible location of the sewer street and plant. We also had looked at the possible sharing of the hospital plant, but this turned out to be not really a feasible alternative because of requirements from the Department of Health that would actually remove the capacity from what was available for the hospital. So we zeroed in on three possible sites, and then after consideration, we zeroed in on one site that's somewhat centrally located, and it's close to the police station. And that's, it's very well located, both from a technical standpoint, as well as the buffer areas that it provides surrounding it. And then we also went, so we defined, we went around and we tried to define this proposed sewer district that's really basically only a commercial property that encompasses the village business district, except for one, a residential complex, which is really in the drainage basin of Lake Agwam, directly drains into Lake Agwam. So we have here a little map that you can see that shows a proposed sewer district. So based on that study, based on those boundaries, we then came up with a possible location of the main collectors and the type of system. And the one that was, that was found to be the most favorable was what's called a low pressure system. And in terms of locating the mains and the collectors, the most efficient routing was one that would cause the least disturbance to the streets, and that would go really go into the parking area and catch the actual septic systems from the various businesses. So you have the parking area near a little red bar, the parking area, the central parking area here, and we would be able to really create the sewer district and the sewer system with really a minimal amount of disturbance to the area. And going also with a low pressure main system allows to actually go with, it's a small pipe, it's like a six inch diameter pipe, that can actually can be bored without having to open even the areas that you need to drill in. So it's a, it was, it's a good system. So the CH2M and the Department of Public Works really did a great job in helping us defining the boundaries and the methodology to go about establishing the sewer district. And the next step would be to set up this district. There are two possibilities. One, basically would be a county district, or the other one is a village district. So this is still something that I think should be reviewed. There are advantages, there are pros and cons on each of the system, but generally, on such a small system, which is completely confined within a village, it would be more appropriate to do a village district, but it could be. So the next step is really to form that district. And that district is typically set by a team of engineers and lawyers. So we would, the village would have to go request proposals, and request proposal, or request qualifications for legal firms with experience in this type of work, and an engineering firm.
Okay. Maybe follow up on a few of those items. So first of all, I think the first thing is, when we started, I think we very much thought the hospital plant would be the focus of our work. There were, I think there's, there are two or three issues in using the hospital plant, which ultimately made us decide that, or made the county decide, I should say, really. But that was not, number one, the hospital plant in today's context is actually fairly old technology. It works okay, but it's not what you would do in today's environment. So that's the first. The second is, it's not easy or inexpensive to create within the hospital plant the capacity we would need for the village center. So if you add the current demand for the hospital, and you take on top of that the potential demand for the village center, it's both expensive and difficult, and you could very quickly get to full capacity, which is not where you want to be. Also, whatever work would be needed to be done to increase the capacity would potentially mean that plan would have to be taken offline, which obviously would be very difficult with an operating hospital. And then finally, last but not least, it's not clear what the hospital's plans are going forward. So you, the flip would be, you're in a spot where you had used a plan even with all technology, and the idea that would be more efficient, but now you don't have the other user for the rest of the, so. It seemed to us, and I think particularly the county, that that was not the best answer. And most particularly, I think also, was not saving money. It was not a less expensive, more efficient, which I think is our first thought was, that that would be a less expensive way of getting it done. So that was the first thing. And then secondly, I think, and this is where the study was so useful, is we found out that in the other villages that had been doing this, which include, I think, Patchogue and Bellport.
Bellport.
Yeah, there was a number of villages that had been doing it with the county. They had, they had, they had used new technology in what are now smaller plants. So it seemed to make a lot of sense to take advantage of that, rather than build something that was, use something that was so old. So then third, I think, you know, the, you know, as we looked at different technology, the low, the low pressure system seemed to have a lot of advantage to us, and fit in a funny way, very nicely with the zoning we had just done, which really talks about taking those parking areas and rebuilding them anyway. So this was, seemed to us a really nice match. So if you took like the parking lot right, right next to us now, which really needs to be rebuilt and rethought, and there's a plan in the new zoning, if you're going to do that anyway, then this is a good time to deal with what the, how we would potentially want to use the parking lot. And as, as part of this whole plan, certainly the drainage in these lots could be redone in a way that would help to address the bigger issue. So as Mark said, I think there's a few things we need to do. One is, we all need to think through what the correct district boundaries are and what should be included. There's a number of areas that are, you know, mixed, and one needs to decide where the boundary should be. For example, how far down Hampton Road do you go? That's a good example. You know, there's, there are commercial things scattered as you continue to go east, but it does change in character. So do you end it right before Town Hall? Do you go any further than that? You know, so there's a lot of boundaries, we would have to decide what's included. And then secondly, I think then look at what the options are for how the district is set up, and particularly how it's financed. So that's, I think, the things we talked about, right? You want to add anything, or?
The one thing I'm going to maybe just to quickly add was that, in terms of technology, also for the plant, there will be no discharge into Lake Agwam, there will be no discharge into the stormwater system. The water will actually be repumped and recharging in the water table. So that's a minimal impact.
Right, right. I thought you had to have a leaching field.
No, not even, we're going to go down drain.
Or no leaching field? Yeah, that was one of the big differences there.
Where does it get recharged?
Because we haven't really vetted the system.
Right, right.
We're talking about this system, but I haven't, we haven't.
Right, right. This is what we had to study more.
But it's a low pressure, whether it's vacuum.
Right, right, right.
So we haven't vetted, we haven't had anybody come talk about.
Right, which I think is one of the next steps. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So I guess there's two or three things we thought about. One is, it would be really, now that sort of, we all think this is the next thing that needs to go forward, is set up a public meeting, and have the county come back in and go through sort of all the data we've collected to date, and also what the options are.
And invite the people, make it, will be included in the business district.
Right, right. And invite the property owners, so we can also hear the issues they have.
Right.
You know, because we're sort of speaking for them a little bit, and thinking this is going to be something they really want, but we want to hear their concerns. And I'm thinking, just to make sure there's proper notice and people are around, that's probably April.
April, May.
May, something like that. Right?
You talk about the system as well as the virtues of, or the ways of governance.
Right, right.
Other county or village, as well as outlining what the system actually does.
Right, right.
How it, how it disposes of waste and water, and how, yeah.
It might be also interesting, maybe, to get people from one of the other villages who have done it to come in and talk about what their experience has been.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
You know, sort of, and how they did it.
Might be a series of meetings, rather than just one.
Right, 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 right. But get it started. And then maybe at the same time, we could start to write up what are eventually going to be requests for proposals, for lawyers, for the engineers, for the things we're going to need, so that the tubes sort of go on parallel tracks.
I mean, who's going to give us a, let's say, to vet the very system? Who can present the systems that we could consider?
Well, I think the county can, can certainly talk about it, and they, they have.
They can only talk about what's been approved by the health department.
Correct, correct.
But there's also other systems that are not approved, that are more modern, that we can look at and propose to the county.
Right, so it sounds like that would be part of what we would, we would do, RFP for engineers to look at, right?
Yeah, because otherwise, we're limited to old systems. Because when the health department approves, that they can talk about a system, we probably don't know what it is.
Yeah, the county talked a little bit about some things they had been starting to look at, but it would still be a great idea.
Yeah, they can't do that. That's why I was asking the question, who can present the systems that we can vet? We need somebody that's really into it, and can give us the, what's available now, the new technology. Otherwise, we're going to be talking about old technology.
Right, right. And the technology seems to be changing pretty quickly now.
And then what's the process, if we don't find no technology that is appropriate for us, what's the process to present it to the county, so that they will approve it? So that's the next step.
Well, and how long has it been used? I mean, I don't know, you had something brand, brand new.
Oh, of course. So then the boundaries is very important. I know we've included the condominiums on Cooper's Farm, but you know, personally, I don't know if you want to include residential.
Right, that's a key, a key question, I think.
And, you know, and I understand that it's, it seems to be close to Lake Agwam, but it's not close to the water table, because that condominium, if you look at the way it's positioned, like the, like the library, it's very high. So it's.
But it drains straight.
Well, no, not if, not if it's not close to the water table. It's not going to, I mean, the problem with the, the problem with the business district and going down on Jobs Lane is because the water table is so high that the septic systems are in the water table. But the residential area is not. So I don't think you have, and, and the studies say that the septic systems themselves are not what it's put in Agwam Park. What's put in Agwam Park is a runoff. So as long as the septic systems are not inside the water table, I don't think it's a big concern.
So that's something we're going to need to look at.
Yeah, we are.
And those, I think, are the issues with the boundaries, is how much residential do you include? Do you make it purely whether, I mean, you know, I was saying, ultimately, there will be residential, because you're going to have buildings that are built in the village center that have, there are a mix of, you know, commercial ground for residential block. But that is different, I agree with you. I agree with you, so.
And I also think that it's really makes a lot of sense to have it a centralized wastewater plant for the entire village business district, rather than have, let's say, hotels trying to do their own little plants here, another one is doing their own little plants here. That, you know, it really makes a lot of sense to have it centralized.
Right.
In one location where you're able to have economies of scale and in terms of technology.
And make sure it's serviced.
Right.
I think the other issue we heard from the county, interesting enough, was that one of the things they've found is when there's a lot of little plants set up by lots of different people, they're then very subject to whether those plants are properly serviced.
Right.
So, you know, the property runs into trouble, the plant that isn't serviced, so they're big advocates of, at least in business districts, I think, central plants. Right? Because then they're assuming a central plant is more likely to be kept up and serviced and work. So.
Okay.
Comments, thoughts? Any sense where the trustees are?
Great work so far. I mean, so, as we did, as you said, as we were working on the village business district master plan and zoning, this was a, is the next step for the village undertake, and only strengthens our village business district. It adds a variety of opportunities to different properties, especially now in Main Street Job's Lane, where we took away the, you know, the office, first floor office stuff, to try to keep some real estate offices off Main Street Job's Lane. Now it adds variety to the property owners and their ability to manage their properties.
So we'll set up something for April.
Right.
And we'll reach out to the county.
Yes.
And sort of ask them to come in.
How do we select engineers to make presentations?
Well, I think we'll, we should do an RFP, and then I guess the question is, we should, as we did last time, get a sort of broad range. I think the last time, we had six or seven firms.
Yeah.
And get a broad range of firms to come in and make presentations. And we did that in public meetings also, we actually vetted all the, we had each of the consultants come in and make a presentation.
And right now, it's a very appropriate time. There's a wastewater, it's in the top of the agenda.
Right.
There's a lot of public funding available for it.
Right, right.
So it's a great time to do it. There's a lot of engineering and legal firms that have a lot of experience with it.
Right.
What's the timeframe? How long do you think it's going to take before we have something as concrete? Can we do this in less than five years?
I think so. I mean, I think, I think in some ways, what we did before was the more difficult work, which was, what are the constraints going to be once the sewer allows things to happen? That, you know, in a way, we have an artificial zoning now, which is, you know, the zoning is really, you can't build anything, so.
Now we can, now can we start moving?
Right, so we've set the zoning, so that.
Can we start meeting in March instead of April?
Well, I just think for a public meeting, it's probably, the problem with March is both not enough people are around, and they'll feel they were excluded, and.
That's true.
You need public notice. But yes, we, I think this is something we want to really push forward to happen.
Should fast track it at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, one of the advantages, one of the pros of having a village district rather than a county district, is that with, through a village district, the procurement and the ability to set it in place, it can be much faster.
Of course.
We can go through a design build process.
That's under our control.
Yes, you don't have to go through all the steps that the county and state require.
Right, right. The county district comes with some money, but a lot less, I mean, when we looked at it, a lot less control over what the village can and can't. I mean, the county is much more controlled then of processes, which I think is probably not what we're looking for in this case.
The aspect of finances and taxation and usage, where is that discussed and determined?
This is discussed when you create the district, which is really, the first step is the creation of the district.
So that's not, that won't be our purview before the purview of the trustees?
I think it's the purview of the trustees, but I think it's something we're going to want to at least recommend what the potential structures are. I mean, that is, I think, in some ways, the most difficult issue, because suing.
Probably the village attorney needs to come in and make a presentation.
Right, right, exactly.
That's what I'm getting at, is how do I get that going?
Right, because there are a number of different options, but ultimately, what you're talking, the way most of these districts work is, at least a portion of the cost, both capital and continual operating, is paid through assessments on owners.
Correct.
And so those owners are going to care a lot what those assessments are.
So I think, I think that.
Owners and users.
Right. I think if we're going to have public meetings, I think maybe those are the things that we should like look at first, because the owners are going to be very interested, not only in the advantages, but also in the costs that they will have to incur, and how that, and how that is confronted with the cost that they actually have right now, with the septics and the pumping and this and that, whatever.
Right.
And to see that they actually have a monetary advantage along with a environmental advantage.
At least long term.
So that probably should be discussed and prepared.
Right.
We could do that in March, we could have the trustees come here and discuss these issues, so that we're ready for a public meeting.
But here, though, and I understand that it's an important consideration, I agree with you, but in this case, the, the need is like, really like extreme, the, you cannot get a single permit.
Right.
To do anything in the village, because the septic systems are not.
But they have to vote.
Yeah, but they are not operating. We are like, we're like, you know.
Right, but you know, this is just the ultimate problem. There's someone who now has a tenant and has an operating building, you're going to convince that person, even for that person, ultimately, it's going to be to their benefit.
But I think to make the district, we also have to get a vote.
Correct, you need a vote. An actual vote.
So you definitely want to have a clear understanding, so that there's not misunderstanding of what the district is going to do.
And don't you have to, it's not only a vote, but I believe a certain number of, a certain percentage of property owners must vote in favor, it's not that of the owners. So you have to actually get them to show up and vote.
In order to create the district.
Right.
You must 50% vote around the.
Definitely the residential out.
Yeah, well, that's one of the reasons, then, to leave that out, right. Those are the issues that I think we need to talk about, because as you make the district bigger, the problem is, you're now, there's more owners, you have to get two, three, there's more owners who, there's actually just literally more individuals we have to get to actually go out and vote.
Yes.
Because if 51% don't vote, it fails.
Yes.
It's not a majority passes it.
Right.
It's that you've actually got 51% of the.
Of those that voted.
Of the people affected.
Of the actual amount of property. It's not property value, I think it's amount of land, right?
If it's a county district, the vote is one property, one vote.
Right.
It doesn't matter if your property is big or small.
Right.
In the county district.
And if it's a village district?
Village, I'm not sure.
Probably the same thing.
I may get it.
Why wouldn't you assume it's that one?
Mark, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I think that, you talked about how the county probably has numbers over what it costs to operate up for it, and the cost of construction. Sag Harbor's got a waste treatment plant in there, so we probably can come up with general numbers.
Right.
And, and I think you're right, before you actually do go to the vote, we will have to have a system design, we'll have to have the boundaries set, we'll know what the value is, we'll know what the water flow is at each one of the properties, and that's one of the ways that they look at it. They take their water bills and compare that.
Yeah, that's how we do it.
So, and they would have all that information available before it ever got to the point of the vote. But now it's a, a couple of years ago, I went to a seminar on waste treatment plants, and they said the very first thing that you have to do is educate the public, and get the public supporting you.
Right.
And you have to have the zoning regulations to support what you're trying to accomplish.
Right.
And then you start to develop the district, this type of system you want, and figure out what the costs are. So from a, from a step process, I think we're moving along the right path.
Right.
And continue to educate people. I think that's a great idea.
Right, right.
An April or a May timeframe. Jay Schneiderman, the legislator, has said he wants to be involved with us.
Great, terrific.
And support us at the county level. And so is Brett Deal and Ken Lao.
Right.
So they're very, very supportive of it.
I'm wondering, Mark, maybe we can put together a PowerPoint for April?
Yeah.
That sort of summarizes the work and the basic points. I think it might be helpful to take people through in a very schematic way, then have the county present, and then maybe we can get one or two of the villages to come and talk about the process they went through and how it's working. The other thing is, I think it'd be helpful if people here, that villages that actually had these facilities operating for a few years, what their experience has been, has it worked the way they said it would work? You know, I think that's going to give people a lot more comfort.
Yes.
I'll reach out to Paul Ponchiere, who's the mayor in Patchogue.
Yeah, Patchogue just finished it.
He just finished the system and stuff, so.
And the county seems to.
Mastic Beach also.
Okay.
The county sort of seems, when they were here, they seemed to sort of look at Patchogue as sort of their model of what they want to do, so.
Oh, they've done a nice job, you know, downtown revitalization programs, completed up there, and brought huge, significant art districts and all the great things, so.
Yeah. Certainly the county, I guess the county executive's recent speech was all about wastewater being his number one priority for the next year, so.
That's right.
It's hopefully good timing.
We'll test it on it.
Right, right. Does that mean money, right?
That's right.
Nice, it's your priority. Other questions, comments? Okay. So I think our regular meeting in April is like the 7th, let me pick it up, I think it's the 6th or 8th or something? So we'll have to see if that works, or we'll just set a different date depending on.
You probably should have a meeting part to that.
Right, well, we'll have a meeting.
We should, we should.
Right.
We should have a work session.
How we want to have a work session, how we're going to proceed. Probably a couple of work sessions, actually.
Really?
So make sure that it doesn't take five years to get this done, I guess.
Right, our regular meeting would be on the 3rd, so we have to figure out if that's, I mean, just make sure there are no, just holidays or other events.
I don't know, when is Easter this year?
Easter's later in the month.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, as it's Passover, I believe.
Okay.
I think they're both later in the month, so.
Okay.
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 It's a big project.
Very good.
Yeah.
Glad we're finally starting.
Yes, we're finally starting.
Let's make it two years.
Right.
And we have to thank Mark, he did a lot of work, playing the groundwork for this, which is, which is very, very.
Which I think we're really starting. So I guess the other thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, we talked a lot at the last meeting about North Sea Road, and I think there was a really good back and forth about what the study should include. And I thought we were basically all in the same place. So I've been speaking to Chick Vahr, he's, he's ready to submit something to us. And so I think we'll all take a look at it, assuming we're okay with it, and we'll share it suddenly with the, with the pub, with the public, so you could all look, will look at it. I think then we'll talk about how we can come up with the funding to get that done.
And we also talking about getting Stan involved for the zoning aspect?
Um, I think we need someone involved, we could see whether Stan or someone, yeah, yeah, we need someone involved with the zoning.
Stan is great.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So I think that's ready to go.
Okay.
Chick is definitely ready to go, so.
And the next time, for next meeting, we discussed about having somebody from Charge[1772.04] And the next time, for next meeting, we discussed about having somebody from Charge Point, making a little presentation.
Let me just hold off that on a second. Anything you want to say about that?
Paul, well, thank you for your staff report. I just want to mention that Pat Adonio and his son is here tonight to hear what might be coming up on North Sea Road, and also Kathleen King, who has a business on that road, is also joining. So thank you for your continued efforts.
So just to, just to repeat, what we've been talking about is, you know, obviously there was a request made to look at North Sea Road and look at, 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 at potentially allowing more retail activity on the road. And in talking about it, I think the planning commission felt two things, that we agreed that North Sea Road needs to be addressed and that they're, that it's not working as it should be now. On the other hand, it raised a number of issues for us that we needed to, that we thought we really need to address. One was traffic. The other thing is coming up with a way to do it that doesn't conflict with what we just finished doing, as someone will point out, over five years in the village, in the village business district. So we thought the best way to do that, in, in the same way we had in the business district, is do a planning study, deal with some of these issues, and then, and then look at the various options and the impact we'd have from a traffic point of view, environmental, and obviously from a business point of view. Would it work? Is it, does it, does it solve the issues we're talking about? And does it happen without being in conflict with the, right, the other, the, the other issues in the company's plan? So at the mayor's suggestion, we reached out to Chick Voorhees. He's been incredibly helpful with helping us frame, I think, a, a, a good study. And so, as I said, we'll have that, I think, in the next few days. We'll get it out to everyone, assuming, I want to hear from everybody that you feel it does address the issues that you've been raising. There's no purpose to doing a study that doesn't, that everyone doesn't feel, does, you know, at least look at the things that, that you've raised.
Paul, if you could arrange somehow to get that into the village clerk's office, I could get a copy of it once it's finalized and then disseminate it.
Yeah, and I think also last time we had put it up on the website, so we forgot a way to do it. Yeah.
Thank you.
And you're also gonna look at what is the proper way of addressing the zoning, whether it's a rezoning or whether it's a special exception as it was proposed.
Well, I think we already decided it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be an over way. I mean, we're gonna actually.
Right, we're thinking if we're gonna do it, we want to do it right and, and make it real, and rather than relying on the boards to.
And part, part of the, and the zoning aspect, if I, if I remember correctly, is if we're gonna be retail, we want to be able to mold the zoning or what will eventually be developed there. That's why we're gonna do something like the village center, because if it's retail, it's gonna maybe bring more development down the line and we want to avoid the big boxes and whatnot and make it so that it's contiguous with the village. But that's why we want to make a zoning study.
Right. And so it's a sensitive traffic artery coming to the village, so we want to look at that as part of this study, obviously.
Well, you end up having to do all the secret stuff anyway.
Right, right, exactly.
Because it's a zoning change, and you've got to go through the entire process, so.
Right, this way you're doing some of it early. And hopefully in the same, using that to, this is the way secret is meant to be used, although no one ever uses it this way, which is you actually use the secret studies to see what you should be doing. Most of us do it at the end, but in this case, we'll actually do it at the beginning. So, okay. So we hear, you know, we've been hearing, it's obviously been a big topic at the last few meetings, so we're very aware of the issue.
No, I'm very excited about the prospect that it would actually change. It'd be really great.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, it's, it's the entrance to the village.
Right.
And, you know, though we're in the village, and I've been there forever.
Right.
I always feel like the village, the village thinks, the village ends at where Pottery Barn is.
Oh, yeah.
So it would be nice to feel that kind of inclusion.
Right, 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 right. And properly done, it is, it is a main entrance. There's probably more people coming in that way than any other way.
The village, you have to come off twenty-seven to get to our village, so the more enhanced that it is, the better it is, the more people will come off, which is what you want, because otherwise, you know, they just keep going and they go through all the other villages, which for us, it's a blessing, I think, to, to be off that, that beaten track and so.
We have to stop and get the red pill, but cupcakes.
Bring them out of the library. No, I, I'm very grateful to.
Thanks.
Both, and we're all considering it and having it happen would be awesome.
Right. Do you want to say something?
No, I was just gonna say, we want to make a representative of the village, so it's actually an entrance of what, you know, it's something nice that they're coming into, so definitely want to include it.
Okay, do you want to talk about the other item that we're gonna talk about?